Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay. This is the Wolfboro Planning Board meeting of September 1st, 2020. My name is Kathy Barnard. I'm the chairman of the planning board. Due to the COVID-19 crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. However, the planning board has jointly decided to proceed with a hybrid meeting format, allowing for members of the public and board to attend and participate in the meeting in person or virtually. In accordance with RSA 91-A:23, the board has one member joining the meeting remotely, which a public body has the authorization to allow. In accordance with the Emergency Order 12, for members of the public, this is to confirm the following: that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means through GoToMeeting. All members of the public and board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the GoToMeeting platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number: 1-646-749-3122, followed by the audio access code 918-242-429, or by video following the directions on the Town of Wolfboro website posted on the homepage under the virtual Town Meeting login information page. Two, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting in person or using GoToMeeting, and instructions are provided on the Town of Wolfboro website at wolfboronh.us on the virtual Town Meeting login information page. Three, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or computer, please immediately call 603-391-8489, or email planningdirector@wolfboronh.us. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Okay, now I'm going to call the role of the planning board members present, and I'll start off with Peter Goodwin.
Here.
Okay, and are you in a room by yourself?
I'm in a room by myself.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Susan Replier.
Present.
Von Dugan.
Here.
Brad Harriman.
Here.
Brad's the representative on the planning board from the Board of Selectmen. John Thurston.
Aye.
Mike Otter.
Present.
And Julie Jacobs, our alternate.
Here.
And Kathy Barnard, I'm present. Okay, all votes taken this evening will be taken by roll call vote. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is for Brewster Academy, the Rogers Center, 72 Academy Drive, tax map and lot This is a site plan review for renovations to the Rogers Center, and this is the formal submission and public hearing. And the applicants are here. Is that correct?
That's correct. Andy Smith from DSK Architects, I believe, will be representing the applicants this evening. We have representatives from Brewster Academy online as well, and we do have a representative from RFS Engineering present as well to answer any questions. Hopefully, the board did receive my email from earlier today. There were some concerns addressed based on travel origin and some other matters about the applicants being directed present in the room, so I appreciate the board's flexibility as they present virtually for you this evening.
Okay, so when the applicants present, I hope they'll also, first of all, they need to tell us who they are and who they're representing, but there are issues that they need to clarify for us. One of them is Phase 1 and Phase 2. There was reference in the written material about Phase 2, and it's my understanding that all we're dealing with tonight is Phase 1. Phase 2 will require another site plan review and application to the planning board in the future. Also, there was discrepancy about how many ADA spaces are available. They need to focus on the parking and the reduction in the parking and how that will be dealt with. The impervious surfaces, that was unclear in my mind because, basically, there were comments about Phase 1 and Phase 2, so if they could clarify the amount of impervious surface for this application. Also, we need to know what energy-efficient measures are going to be included in the renovation of this facility. So if you'll go ahead, please.
Good evening, everyone. This is Andy Smith. I'm a senior project manager at DSK. I'm an architect representing Brewster Academy tonight. Just want to make sure everyone can hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks. I'm going to share my screen. We'll make sure this goes okay. All right, and everyone can see the presentation here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you very much for accommodating us virtually. Appreciate it. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to present the Rogers Center project. I will kind of do a basic overview just to orient everybody, especially if there's public logged in, and we'll get to your questions that you brought up in just a minute. This page here just kind of gives everyone a highlighted view of the Brewster Academy property, the campus, and a locust plan showing the Rogers Center central to campus, adjacent to their historic academic building. This is a building that's very, it's very central to their campus and will be used quite heavily by the students once it's fit out and renovated. So right now, in its current state, it's a 1954 gymnasium that has been, I would say, underutilized to its fullest extent possible, and we're hoping to kind of realize that dream to fit it out as a full student commons center with performing arts capabilities, dance studio, black box theater, practice rooms, and a cafe. So this will really be kind of the center of campus for students to hang out, to do studying, to collaborate with each other, and it's desperately needed on campus. Let's go to the next slide here. Oh boy. There we go. So just to start off and address the Phase 1/2 approach, we had mentioned that maybe occasionally in the application, the Phase 1 is based on an approach to divide the renovations into two parts. First one being renovating the gym level, adding a second floor mezzanine into that space, and doing all of the exterior site work that's to the east side of the building. Phase 2 will, once that's, once the funding is in place for that phase of the project, will include a future addition and fit out of the lower level, we're calling Level 0 in the building. Any questions on the Phase 1/2 approach, or Brewster, do you want to address that at all?
I would just add for clarification, this is Matt Sullivan, that obviously, the application in front of you this evening is for Phase 1 only. It does not include any approvals for Phase 2 work. Brewster understands that they will need to return to the board once Phase 2 is actually proposed in a final application form. You'll see that in my suggested review conditions, I did include something that referenced this being only for a Phase 1 approval, just for clarification of the record moving forward.
Right, and it is my understanding the Phase 2 needed to be addressed for the stormwater plan that was submitted. So that's why we included both Phase 1 and Phase 2 in that, in those design calculations.
Could you say that again, please?
Yeah, and perhaps Jason, if he's in attendance, he's our civil engineer from RFS, can probably speak to that as well, but I believe the stormwater plan, management plan that was submitted to the town needed to address both Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Thank you.
So that's why there was a reference to both. So it may be a little confusing, so I apologize. So here we are zooming in from the locust plan here, and maybe I will pass it off to Kaki Martin. She's our landscape architect on the project, and she can talk about the exterior improvements, plantings, hardscapes, and parking improvements. Kaki, are you still there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Sure.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Again, I'm Kaki Martin with the Club for Martin Design Group, and we are the landscape architecture consultants to DSK Architects, helping them on this project at Brewster. The image that Andy has up here for you is the rendered plan, showing you what the scope of work is for this Phase 1. And to clarify the parking, we will have three ADA accessible spaces, which you see in blue at the corner of the existing parking lot. This project does pull back the extent of the existing parking lot and allows for this nice crossways path, kind of a large campus connection to really kind of work and connect two sides of campus. As many of you probably know, right now, the circulation sort of involves moving through the end of the parking lot, actually. So we think this is a really nice adjustment to kind of separate circulation from parking. And you see some separation there with the four trees directly to the west of the parkings, or southwest of the parking. The blue dashed route is the path of travel for the accessible route to the front door. That involves coming into sort of, there's a large plaza space in the front that can accommodate a variety of activities and really just becomes the forecourt for this sort of newly, new vision of this building. The blue dashed line takes you along a sloped walk. It is under 5%, and is the accessible route that takes you out, up and around to the front door. The other way that you would enter would be through up a series of stairs. So at the back of the plaza is a series of stairs that take you up to the front door. On either side of this plaza is sort of large areas of mostly native planting. We are preserving as many of the existing birch trees as is feasible, and we are supplementing them as well. Other improvements really include sort of bringing into compliance all the series of the entries on either side of the sort of, really, I guess it's the east and west sides of the, of the building, which are kind of secondary entrances, but those are all being regraded and adjusted to kind of bring into more current compliance and adjust with the new programming inside the building. There are also a variety of infrastructure and utility improvements that are happening as a result of this project, and so you see toward the bottom of the page, location of a new transformer, generator, and air intake and condenser unit. So those are also located for ease of maintenance and access, and RFS will certainly go into more detail than I on that. The kind of, everything that's not kind of highly textured and in the darker greens will be lawn, installation of lawn. So that kind of on the lakeside, if you will, that whole area will be refurbished lawn. Site lighting is another feature of the plan. We will be adding new additional pedestrian scale lights. We will be also retaining some of the lights that are already on campus, and the construction process also will also require the removal of some of the existing lights, but they will be replaced. And the proposed lights are in the kind of darker orange dots that you see on the site Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, did you mention the screening of the generator and transformer?
Yes, I can talk about that a little bit more. Thanks for the reminder. We took the approach that, well, the most important view in terms of screening really is from the public, the public side, so the parking lot side of the project, and feel that we have sort of certainly screened the transformer. The other thing that's happening, of course, is the ground is slipping away. As you're moving closer to the lake, the road is sloping downwards, so if you're standing, having just gotten out of your car in the parking lot, for example, a lot of those features are moving down and away from you. But you can see the variety of sort of the darker green tones. Is an intention about screening with shrub material. We aren't at the moment bringing things too close to the road. I think we need to kind of thread the needle about maintenance and snow, and know that there will be snow piled up on the edges of that road. And we also need, we have some limitations in terms of being able to, needing to provide some clearance around some of these features as a requirement of kind of safety and maintenance access. We took the approach that the primary issue was really to screen from the kind of public side of the project.
Questions, folks?
Yeah, I'll chime in on that. Looks like the public side of the generator, if you go down the road, is wide open to the viewing. Is that correct?
On the roadside, yes. It is, we, we need to keep some of that open. We can probably get some very, some low planting in along there, but full screening and still allowing access to the generator for, you know, yearly maintenance and things like that.
Well, it looked like your building there had a full screening between the generator and the building. I don't know if you could maybe make a swap there?
Okay, we can certainly look at that.
Are you proposing that the vegetation switches towards roadside?
Towards the side.
Yeah. Yeah, I know you can kind of see in the plan there that there's a clear area around the generator where we need to keep a certain clearance distance for the generator operations that are required by the manufacturer. In terms of pushing it closer to, or swapping it, we would need to push the generator closer to the building, and I do know that there's a, there's a-
A 10-foot.
A 10-foot limit from the building.
A 10-foot limit, yeah. So we can't move the generator closer to the building, but we can look at what type of planting maybe we could get between the generator and the road, but I think we are, we are limited on space, but we can reexamine that again, but we can't, we certainly can't move the generator closer to the building.
Yeah, we understand that, but don't we have a requirement, Matt, that that type of mechanism has to be screened?
It's screened along the way, it's quiet, so it really comes down to the drive being a public way or not. I think the board can certainly require as a condition that some screening be installed there, but there are clearly functional issues with putting that screening there between the roadway and the generator. I think we may want to hear from the applicant's engineer potentially if there are complications, not to put the applicant's engineer on the spot, but I do believe they would want to comment on this.
Okay. All right.
Jason from RFS Engineering. Andy covered it, actually, real quick, talking about the clearances we need from the building. We need 10 feet from not only the building for, you know, safety issues, but also there's a gas regulator from the propane tanks that we're going to use to heat the building with, so that's why we're going to bump up against it. And then we're also debating your public way. Brewster's, that road right there is actually private roads. We weren't sure how that would relate into the screening, not so much of Main Street, out the main right away and all that, too.
Perhaps I should have been, yes, that's, that was my point, in that it's not a requirement, but if the planning board is asking for something, this applicant could certainly consider it, but it is not a public way, and that's what the landscaping ordinance contemplates when it talks about screening and streetscaping.
Okay, that was, actually, that was my question. Was it a requirement?
It is not a requirement because Academy Drive is not a public way.
Okay, thanks for your clarification, and I neglected to mention that when we're reviewing an application, we go through the application with the applicants. They make all their comments, planning board members ask their questions, Matt Sullivan, our planning director, makes any comments. Then we have to accept an application as complete if we determine it's complete. After all that happens, then we can open a public hearing. Sorry, I forgot to mention that at the beginning, but go ahead, folks.
All right. Thank you very much. There, I know there were some other questions from the board. There were some comments regarding parking, we can get to in a minute, also the lighting fixtures. There was a question about the dark sky compliance. All of our fixtures that are on the building themselves are dark sky compliant. The existing site pole lights that are on the Brewster campus that we are looking to use again are, are not dark sky compliant, but we're working with the manufacturer to see if we can get a fixture that matches pretty closely and still meets the requirements.
And I think in addition to that, Andy, I'll just say, we're also looking to see if there is the possibility of a retrofit of the existing. If there's not, then we would move to a similar fixture that certainly that would be compliant. So we're, we're aware of the requests and are working on resolving that.
Yep.
Go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, Mike.
Regarding the lighting, will these Victorian lighting fixtures, so to speak, be consistent throughout the campus, or are they going to be unique and specific to the Rogers building? In other words, are you looking at consistency in lighting fixtures and features throughout the entire campus, or will these be particular to this particular site?
I think there's an interest to have and kind of have campus standards and not be changing fixtures across campus, and so we're sort of actually taking clues from what's already on campus, and probably what we're, what we're searching for is finding what is a more compliant or a night sky compliant with the latest sort of inner workings that has a similar aesthetic appearance.
My question was, will the lighting around this project be consistent with the lighting elsewhere on Brewster's campus in terms of appearance?
Yes, that's the, that's the intention, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, did you want to comment?
If I could just add a little bit more to that. Yeah, what we have found is the new modern light fixture that went to LED lost, or I'm not saying it was lost, but did not have the dark sky compliant certification with it, and we're checking with the manufacturer to see if there's any option to bring it back. That was the issue with it right now.
Okay, thank you. Do you folks want to continue?
Sure. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So there was a couple other, no. Sorry, I know there were a couple other comments that I wanted to touch on with the site plan. We can move on after this and kind of talk about the building, specific elements. Peter, with Brewster, I don't know if you wanted to touch on, there was a question about the dumpster on, or whether there'd be a dumpster on site.
Right now, we do not have any on-site solid waste disposal. We have an internal team that picks the trash up every day and takes it to our centralized solid waste site behind the, where we currently have dumpsters, so we're not looking to add any dumpsters, and there's not one currently there.
So there will be no dumpster on site for this particular building?
Nope.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, can, go ahead, Mike.
Can you address the problem of snow storage, where you're going to put it? Because it's not really specified in the narrative where it's going to go. It's just sort of said it's going to go away.
We keep all of our snow on site, more than enough capacity on campus to handle all of our snow removal. We do all our own internal snow removal, and we don't have a centralized location. We don't off-site any snow. That was written in one of the comments there. We don't off-site any of our snow removal. Everything's handled on campus, and we don't foresee any extra snow removal needs because we're already doing that with the current building.
I understand that. My question is, where on this particular site plan are you going to put your snow? Usually on a site plan review, the applicant indicates somewhere on the plan where the snow storage is intended to be placed, and I see nothing on the, on the plan here, and the narrative is insufficient. I'm just wondering if you could indicate to us where it might be put.
Yeah, right now, where we, where we store the snow for this building is at the end of Academy. We have a turnoff onto Much Field in that area there, where we keep all of the snow from that, from that, from Academy Drive.
Okay, thanks, Peter.
So it would be right down past the, past the field in that area to the bottom left-hand of the lotus, locust plan that you can see now.
Okay, thank you. So what about your other parking lot here? We've got the three ADA compliant spots here. I think your, your way of explaining that you get rid of the snow is great, but when you end up with snow in the parking lots and it creates ice and it melts, then you create a safety hazard, so I think that's one of our concerns in parking lots. And you're going to create this new parking area, so I'd like to see a location where you're going to sweep it away or, or move it to.
Yep. What we have is we have a, the snowbank gets large like that, is we have a tractor, and we move it down to that lower location, that same area that I'm speaking of, down by the fields. So we would, the intent would be to have no snowbanks around any of that back area of the parking lot and keep that clear throughout the winter, so that we would have no ice buildup.
And that, that parking lot is existing today. It actually extends further to the south as shown on the site plan. I would expect that the proposed snow storage plan is comparable to what's currently being done on site. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Further question. Could you, could you address the concerns raised by the planner regarding the available ADA spaces? There appears to be a discrepancy, but on two of the sheets and the plans, one showing two and one showing three spaces. We'd like to know which is going to be on the final build-out?
Yes, the three spaces that you see on this graphic here is correct.
Okay, so three is the number.
So three is the number.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Increase of our current ADA spaces that we have in that area. Increase of our current ADA spaces that we have in that area.
And also, can you address the loss of parking? I think you're losing some parking spaces, and just tell us how you're dealing with that issue.
Yeah, we have one, I think we only lose one parking spot on the end of the parking lot, and then there's two more that get turned into ADA spaces. Last year, we added parking on one, on the north side of our campus for more additional parking, we've also off-sited our micro birds, our busses, so that we've cleared up an entire other parking lot that's in close proximity behind the Goodwin home, that would be for overflow space if we had an event or something like that, so that gives us another, I want to say 18 additional parking spots as it is now, and we're going to re-strike them to have, to be set up even more for regular passenger vehicles.
Okay, and then the impervious surface, it looks to me like you're actually reducing it, right?
Yeah, we actually reduce impervious surfaces in this scope.
So once it's, once it's removed, it's gone, right, Matt?
That's correct, we did ask for the stormwater drainage analysis, rather, to contemplate Phase Two, so that we had some expectation of what was coming down the road, but in reality, Phase Two will be required to be reviewed by this board, so this is, in fact, with this application, is a decrease in impervious surface, Phase Two will be viewed as an independent effort, but again, for this application, it's an improvement to the impervious coverages on the lot.
Okay, well, but that was a question I guess I have for you, because you say in your comments that there's new stormwater improvements, yeah, I thought they said there's stormwater improvements were going to be done in Phase Two, so which is it?
My understanding is stormwater will be done in Phase One, including swale, infiltration trenches, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes, so these will be done as part of Phase One work.
Okay.
Yep, the reference to Phase Two stormwaters, we talked during technical review phase about contemplating that future development as part of this drainage analysis, just so the board had an idea of what the longer-term change would be, but again, for Phase One, there will be new stormwater in the adjacent site area, and it is a decrease in impervious coverage on the lot.
Okay, that's good, because it's my understanding that Phase Two may be into the future.
Correct.
Yeah, okay, okay. Also, could somebody address your energy efficiency measures that you're taking in this major renovation?
Sure, I can address that, let me go to the next slide here, we can take a look at the building and see, talk about mechanical systems and energy efficiency, so this is a rendering of the improvements to, this is the front plaza, that's kind of on the plan right of the previous site plan that we saw, based on the roof line of the building, which is existing over the gym as a mansard roof, there's not a huge amount of area for mechanical equipment, we're going to be putting it over this leading volume that's kind of on the east side, plan right of the previous slide that we saw, and there, just to kind of jump ahead and talk about the mechanical screening question, it will be located kind of on this, this volume here, and be screened with a louvered system that will block most of the views of that. In terms of overall energy efficiency measures, I have a small list I can read to you, essentially the building is currently being fed by number-two diesel-fired boilers for heat, so obviously not an ideal fuel source, and so we're obviously looking to improve that as much as possible, that's going to switch to a high-efficiency propane-fired condensing boilers with hydronic trim heating for comfort and preservation heat. The pumps will be high-efficiency hydronic pumps, and those are going to have proportional pressure control logic for accurate flow control and energy savings, meaning it can kind of do the pressure on the fly, it's kind of got smart controls to it. It will have air-source heat recovery systems for space air conditioning for levels one and two, there's energy recovery in all three air handling units, there are economizer capabilities in all three air handling units, there is demand control ventilation, which is for CO2 control and multi-occupancy spaces such as classrooms, the black box, meeting rooms, and commons, there, essentially, all the systems in the building are going to be removed and replaced with modern, high-efficiency standards, so a lot of the systems that are in the building now are still being used from decades ago, and so it's all, it's all going, and we're getting new, new equipment inside, so that means all new plumbing fixtures, which have reduced water flow, which would be great, occupancy sensors in rooms to turn off the lights when nobody's in, in the room, we're going to have LED lighting throughout as much as possible, there's, I'll show you in a second, an exterior elevation showing, we're going to have brise-lay exterior louvers, horizontal wood louvers that will shield the large windows on the southwest side from excessive solar heat gain, and probably the best in terms of, you know, keeping all this heat inside the building is we're going to insulate a building that is previously uninsulated in its exterior thermal envelope, there's a little bit of roof insulation on some of the roofs, but we're going to be doing a complete, full extent of new insulation on the roof, and insulating the exterior walls, which would make a huge improvement on energy efficiency.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
One question, you refer to sheet C1-01, on items numbers three, five, and eight, you refer to compacted structural fill to be employed on the site, I'm assuming that that's to provide a foundation base for your Phase Two structure. Question for you is, how can you, if the Phase Two is something to be built in the future at an indeterminate date, how were you able to spec what kind of structural fill you're going to be employing on site in anticipation of a structure which you haven't yet designed?
Jason, do you want to speak to that?
Right now, I just want to, where on the site are you referring to that as?
I beg your pardon, item number three, on sheet C101.
So that is in the area where the existing dance studio is being removed, so we'll be bringing in structural fill to replace where the foundation was to build it up again.
Yes.
So basically, it's going to be good gravel that we're going to pack solid, it may need to be removed again when we build the foundation, but we want something that's not going to move in the meantime.
So you're not providing foundation basis for a future structure, you're just filling in after you've taken out an older structure?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Very similar to where the oil tank will be removed as well.
Okay, that answers the question, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Matt, do you have additional things that we need to consider?
No, I believe you've all covered my comments adequately, I think the applicant had a chance to review these in advance, I have no additional comments to offer, I do have some conditions to add on at the end, should the board choose to take action this evening based on the comments tonight.
Okay, so...
Site drainage notes, going to go over the drainage?
Yes.
Yes, stormwater management, yes, we did not discuss stormwater management.
Yep.
Are you going to give us a presentation of it?
Am I going to give you a presentation?
Oh, it's somebody.
That's a good question, would please walk through stormwater drainage?
Yes.
Jason, do you want to discuss stormwater?
Yep. Actually, why don't we start with the existing sites, so they get an idea of what, where it is now, and then what we're improving, if you could go to, here we go, sheet, yes, C101, so currently on the site, let's start with the building, drainage is all collected internally, and is discharged through a pipe system towards the lake, we believe it daylights somewhere out underneath the existing sports field, the current parking lot sheds down the sheet to existing catch basins, which is then collected and heads to a closed drainage system that then outfalls along Academy Way on the, I'm going to say, page south side, and flows towards the lake. Currently, Academy Way has a crown to the road, which has the water that sheds in both directions, towards the south side of the road and the north side, which as it flows down the road, Academy does have a slight issue with water kind of crossing in front of the sports field at the bottom of the hill. And then, most of the green space around the building, it pitches away and flows down towards the retaining wall, and it is collected by the system that's near the field. All right, go ahead and go to the proposed plan. So on the new plan, we are going to be collecting all the roof drains internally again as well, and sending them to a closed drainage system, we're south and having a new outfall into the swale along Academy Way. The road, we are proposing to remove the crown out of the road and have it cross-pitch, that way it's all angled to a new infiltrated swale along the south edge, and then we are changing one catch basin where the existing parking way used to shed to on the south corner of the parking lot, to move it to just upstream of the crosswalks, that way the water's collected before students crossing the road right there, and that is tying back into the original drainage system. So that's, very minimal is happening on site for drainage right now, so.
Matt, this issue came up at TRC, and I think it came up from Dave Ford, but do you know if his issues have been addressed with this plan?
Yes, so the stormwater issue that came up was addressed by Dave Ford, and I think he was comfortable with the proposed stormwater system, are you speaking to the sewer and water connections, or just the stormwater system?
Well, I think he had...
He was comfortable with the catch basin relocation and the proposed stormwater swale, he initially had concerns about the infiltration trench, I believe, as part of the TRC, but after the applicants addressed this at TRC, he was comfortable.
Oh, okay.
I can confirm with him if the board would like, just before any work is done, if that would be something you'd like me to do.
Why don't we further our discussion before you do that?
Okay, then, okay, thanks, Matt, go ahead, John.
You all set?
I'm all set, yep.
All right, folks, this is Brewster Academy, and I'm going to turn you to page one of three, RFS Engineering, and in the middle of the page, there's a stormwater runoff mitigation, existing conditions, you'll see a 120 feet, right below that says all runoff, ultimately ends up in Lake Wenupusaki. We know that that is the golden goose of this town and everything we stand for. As I read this proposal, I don't feel that Brewster Academy has put everything into mitigating stormwater runoff that ultimately ends in Lake Wenupusaki. This should have been the first thing, the most important thing, that you guys talked about tonight. I'm not satisfied with the stormwater trenches, and I'll tell you why. If you look at the cut sheet, the cut sheet describes a crushed stone two feet down with a four-inch soil base grown over the top of it. I drove down there today, and if you're going to tip all the road to one side, and you're going to take all that water from all those houses on the right side of that street going up the road to Main Street, you're taking all that other water off, and when you accumulate that all in there, and you add the steep slope to it, that stuff is just zooming right down over the hill, and it's not sinking into the ground at all. You had a 6,200 feet, 6,200 square feet of catch area gallons, volume provided, but only when it drips and drabs down through there, if it's in a steep slope condition, it's not going in. My proposal would be that all the water be held on the site of Brewster Academy, so that it doesn't run off into Lake Wenupusaki. And my proposal would be that they come back to us and create stormwater basins and catch ponds that hold the water back, because they ultimately just said that that road is theirs, and they're responsible for it, and that's their words tonight.
Just for a little more clarification on that trench, it will be designed with intermittent, I think it's every 50 feet of, I won't say impervious, but a dense gravel to slow the flow through the rock underneath the swale, and then on the surface, we'll have, sitting on top of that, a check dam to help reduce the speed of water which flows through it, to give it a chance to infiltrate down through it.
Are you making, excuse me, I'm looking at sheet C3-01, item number seven is a rubblestone masonry head wall, which seems to be the end of the drainage for the swale coming off of Academy Drive, and also for the top of the building, the roof of the building, and all the drainage structures on that building, they're all draining directly onto item number seven, that head wall. If you've made no changes to the existing swale that all this water is going into, is the existing swale going to be capable of handling the additional runoff from the roof of this building? And the way you've now graded Academy Drive, which will be increasing the amount of runoff in that direction?
It's my understanding that this building is not growing, it's already existing, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, same footprint.
Same roof.
Same, yeah.
Actually, slight reduction because we're moving the dance studio off the rear of it.
But the way, the way the drainage plan has been, and I'm only a layman, the way the drainage plan has been indicated, everything is running out to drain out into, towards that single head wall, that item number seven on the plan, and that swale that's there is existing now, and it would appear to me that what's, with the grading on Academy Drive, running into that swale which is to be constructed, and the runoff from the roof, which is being directed all in one spot, maybe the same structure size, and possibly the same structure height, and same tilt, but the way the water is being led is new, is that existing swale which heads down Academy Drive and eventually to the lake going to be sufficient to be able to contain that flow of water? That's the question I have.
And the testimony of the landscape architect tonight described that everything is sloping away from the building, and will all be sloping away from the building towards the road now.
Yeah.
And you, basically, instead of splitting the water up and going in two different directions, and slowing it down in two different directions, now you're creating one direction where it's all going to create more volume and more speed, and create more wash.
Brad, have you got any thoughts on this?
Yeah, looking at this, you know, Mike makes a good point, John does too, that they're addressing the infiltration trench above where the outlet is for head wall number seven, which is where the roof drainage is now going to be directed to, and just looking here, we have an 11-foot drop from the beginning of the infiltration trench to the end of the infiltration trench, where it dumps into another swale where the pipe comes out from just below the Piper House there. My initial quick thought, looking at the cross-section here of the swale, as John pointed out, the very bottom, they have a four-inch layer of loam, you're seated, so you have a grass mat there, my initial thought might be to eliminate that part of it and continue the erosion stone across the entire bottom, to allow that water to drop into the trench and be, it would definitely be slowed down a lot into the, you know, inch-and-a-half stone underneath it there, which is a two-foot wide, two-foot deep trench there, but water's still going to be flowing down even through that there, once it's all saturated, you're going to get a slower flow what you will get you're going to get a slower flow than you will get. I think something does need to be addressed at the outlet there by head wall number seven, because I haven't seen anything here, looking quickly, that addresses from there down through the other fields, heading towards Brewster Beach and Wolfboro Bay there, so I think something should be looked at in that section area, there's some type of a detention, your basin or rain garden, or an underground infiltration system installed. They don't want to look at a pond with cat and nine tails in it and stuff on campus. They have a lot of technology in there for these, under these storm tech drainage systems, so there's a lot of options there.
Did you want to comment on these thoughts?
No, I do agree. Unfortunately, I don't have the numbers in front of me to evaluate that stone swale farther down from the head wall number seven. I know we would do everything we could to make sure it is adequately sized for any additional water coming in. And you do bring up a valid point, that we are redirecting some of the roof water over into that area, and that we would have to take an evaluation of that swale.
Is the applicant willing to reconsider the drainage plan?
Yes.
At least that portion of the drainage plan, and answer the questions that have been raised in this regard.
I think John is absolutely right. We have an expectation that stormwater management is a critical piece of projects for all of our properties adjacent to the lake. I think this is an incremental improvement, but clearly there are other issues that need to be addressed here.
Yeah.
I think it's an opportunity. We don't get these opportunities many times.
Yeah.
And if we have the ability to improve the proposed plan, I think we should do that.
Yep.
Certainly, we know that Brewster are one of the good stewards of the lake, but, you know, again, these opportunities only come along so often.
Yep.
It's a critical opportunity, I think.
Right, one thing to note is, overall, the site is reducing its impervious that's heading ultimately all to the lake for this one application at this time.
Okay, thank you. What I'd like to do is to, have you want to ask all your questions, because I'd like to move ahead, accept the application, because the application, I believe, is complete.
I could make that motion.
And so we can get any public comments. Is that okay with everybody, and then come back to this issue?
Be happy to move the application as complete.
Okay, that's a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, somebody want to second the motion?
Seconded.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote to accept this application as complete. Peter Goodwin? Accept the application as complete, Peter? I'm sure he's, is he responding?
He's saying, he's nodding his head.
No, I'm sorry.
All right, well, that's good. Okay, Von Dugan?
Yes.
Susan Replier?
Yes.
Mike Carter?
Yes.
John Thurston?
Yes.
Brad Harriman?
Yes.
And Kathy Barnard, I vote yes. So, we've accepted the application as complete, so I can go ahead and open the public hearing. So, if there's any member of the public that wants to speak to this application, why don't you come on up, tell us who you are, and speak into the microphone up here?
Hi, my name is Nancy Hirschberg. I'm a townsperson and a butter and a parent of a recent graduate from Brewster. And my question, I'll just ask the two questions, and I'll sit down to take the answer. You went pretty, on the energy efficiency, you went pretty fast through the envelope changes. You just mentioned insulation. Can you talk a little bit more about the, what you're doing for the envelope, including the windows and so forth? And then, also, currently, the electricity isn't metered on that building, so there's no way of tracking it. Will that, when you put in the new utilities, will you be installing a way to track the energy use as well? Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Nancy.
Sure, I can address the thermal envelope question, the insulation. All of the windows that are on the building will be replaced with new insulated glazing units filled with argon, which is a very insulative gas, and we're going to be specifying a very high-performance glazing as well, so any new windows will be vastly improved to what's existing there. I believe a lot of the windows on the building are single-pane glass from the 50s, so this will be brought up to modern standards. In terms of the roof insulation, we'll be doing a minimum R30, which is to code, and that is, will be a poly-isow material, which is kind of like a rigid foam insulation that goes over all the roof areas. And for the exterior, the walls, so that's a little bit trickier, since this is a mass masonry building that was designed in the 50s and was not designed to have insulation, so we're doing a system that will allow the masonry to still dry out from the inside. So, we're adding, the current concept is to add blown-in mineral wool insulation, so that's kind of like the Roxol product you see in stores. And it'll be blown in to stud bays on the inside of the building, and we'll be putting a, what's called a smart air vapor barrier on the inside, which will allow any moisture that gets in there to kind of breathe to the interior and keep the masonry walls nice and healthy. So, and that'll also be brought up to code as well.
And the R value of the walls?
It'll be a minimum R13.
And, and the windows, are they triple-pane, double-pane? What are they?
It's technically two layers of glass, so it's, yeah, so it's kind of like a double pane, you'd see in your house.
And, what's your prediction or modeling for how much energy will be reduced from the current usage?
It's going to be dramatically improved. We don't quite have those exact numbers in at the moment, so I can't give you an exact percentage of what the improvement is.
Ballpoint, I mean ballpark range?
Well, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know if I have a ballpark, but in terms of everything that's being improved, it's going to be vastly improved over the existing.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mike.
One last issue on the planner's review. Planner requested the applicant clarify that no changes are proposed to the signage for this particular site.
I did note that within the applicant's submission that they provided today, they indicated a new sign on the exterior of the building, but I'm not aware of any other changes to signage proposed, particularly on the public way.
Thank you.
Right, just to speak to that real quick, the renderings that are shown in some of these have, we have a location for temporary signage that would go on the building, so that might be like, you know, something for performances in the Black Box Theater to kind of advertise for that, so we at least have a location for that. It's not a permanent signage area, so that's what's kind of shown in red here. And I had also shown in the elevations just a location for, eventually, the Brewster Academy will be adding a building sign to the building just for identification purposes. And that's, I think all the rest of theirs are a 12-inch by 30-inch sign, non-illuminated. That'll be affixed to the building.
And my last comment is just a comment. As a parent of a graduate who really loves this school, as a townsperson who cares deeply about this town, this building hasn't been renovated in 70 years. It's probably not going to be renovated for at least another 50 or 70. For an educational institution that educates children to not even know how much energy they'll be reducing, or a town that has a master plan that encourages and wants us to reduce it, I think it's, I can't begin to express my disappointment that you didn't, just like what Mr. Thurston just said about stormwater, that you didn't take the time and the effort to go that little bit extra to make this a model building, I think is a crime. It's a real disappointment to the students, to the future students, to the teachers, and to the community, and I'm really sorry about that, and I hope that you still will consider doing more.
Okay, other comments, folks, applicants? Matt, how should, how should we proceed here?
I think the board has raised such a substantial issue that needs to be addressed by the applicant relative to stormwater drainage. Based on the testimony tonight, I'm not sure the board can take action on the application under conditional approval. I think it needs to have some supplemental work done to it. Ultimately, it's the board's decision, but in the past, I've recommended a two-week continuance for this sort of issue, and if the board is willing, I would recommend a two-week continuance to address the stormwater issues raised this evening.
Yeah, given the fact that Brewster would like to get this project started in this month now, I would support a two-week delay or advance until they can come back to us so we can get this project going, if they're able to answer the stormwater concerns that we had. I'd be happy to make that into, turn that into a motion, if that's what this board wants.
Everyone, I'm okay with that? Yeah, go ahead.
So, I'd be happy to move that the planning board continue case number 2020-22, big pardon, Brewster Academy 72/80 Academy Drive, to a date certain, which would be?
September 15th, 7:00 p.m.
September 15th, 7:00 p.m., same method as being used tonight.
Okay, thank you. Motion has been made. Somebody want to second it?
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. I'll do a roll call vote to table this application. Peter Goodwin? Okay, his mouth moved. Okay, Von Dugan?
Yes.
Susan Replier?
Yes.
Mike Carter?
Yes.
John Thurston?
Yes.
Brad Harriman?
Yes.
And I'll vote in favor of tabling the application. Okay, applicants, thank you very much, and we'll see you in two weeks with some revised plans, I hope, or at least that's the expectation from the planning board members. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you very much for your time.
And Nancy, thanks for your comments. Okay. My agenda here, all right. On to the next action items. Okay, the next item is public comment. Any member of the public want to make any comments to us? Nancy, have you got any other words of wisdom for us? Okay, all right, okay, other business. And the first one is the master plan implementation. Yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair, may I just speak to the former applicant's engineer quickly, and I'll come back to the conversation in a second? Are you okay with that? If I step away for just a moment?
Okay.
Just for a moment, I'm just going to step away.
Okay, why don't we, how about talking about the hole on the master plan implementation? Go to the lighting committee. John and Susan, did you folks make any progress with the lighting committee? Matt did send us a mission statement, and I was wondering what people's reactions are to that.
You don't need to hang around anymore if they don't want to.
What was that?
The applicant, does the applicant need to stay online any longer?
No.
Then perhaps we should let them know that if the applicant would like to go take care of their own personal business?
Yeah, okay, Brewster folks, thank you very much for your time, and so we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, lighting committee and lighting mission statement. Any thoughts? The planning board, all of you seem to think that we should have a committee to address the lighting issues that have been brought to our attention, mainly Patty Cook had brought some issues to our attention, and that's sort of what I think precipitated this. So, any thoughts?
We only want two members of the planning board?
And John and Susan, we're going to sort of decide how we should proceed. You folks got any thoughts?
We had discussed possibly drafting a letter to include in the newspaper as one possibility, as an initial suggestion to the public, but I'm not sure if that was formally decided
Reason I ask is that currently, on the voting, the planning board is outnumbered on this lighting committee. If the committee decides to come up with an idea and the planning board members don't like it, the committee will decide, the planning board members will not have made that decision. My suggestion would be if you raise the members of the planning board to three, then you have a tie vote, it gives the planning board control of the lighting committee. Right now, the planning board does not have the control of the lighting committee.
I see that.
I wonder, though, since it's a committee of the planning board, doesn't it come back to us?
Eventually, it will come back to us, but the recommendation would be whatever the recommendation of the lighting committee wants to come up with, and if the planning board members of the lighting committee don't like what the lighting committee is coming up with, whatever's going to be presented to the planning board is going to be what the other members of the lighting committee want to present. And it just means, yes, the planning board will have to say, no, we don't like this, go back and redo it, which would be delay and additional work. Just a suggestion.
I think we could act cordial and have a common sense in our meetings and then bring it to us. I think, I mean, unless somebody else wants to join us, I mean, that would be my only thought. I think we could come up with that.
I thought it worked really well, wayfinding sign committee, pretty similar, where it wasn't, I don't think the planning board members outweighed the public members on that either, but that worked really well, I thought.
And we really haven't had any strong problems, and really, all we're trying to do is clarify and get a sense of a program going forward here.
Well, and there's a specific goal in the master plan in the future land use chapter, so that's the starting point. And with Matt's mission statement, if people agree with this, but this is more of a townwide issue, so that it's going to go possibly beyond recommendations or changes that the planning board would want to make.
None of you are historians, are you?
Also, go to, you just hold electric department.
But I do like Susan's comment, though, if anybody else has suggestions they want us to consider, we'd be more than willing to look at those considerations.
Right.
So, do we need a motion on this, or is this just a moving target?
Well, it is another committee, and...
I think that we have one meeting, and we can help, like what we would like to see. I think it would be in our, the folks in the town, to adhere to what our recommendation is. This is going to be hard to use this, do the best we can for suggestion and effort. And more through the administration.
Right.
We have to refresh everybody's memory, for one thing, so that they know what's out there, and we have to adapt to all the new things that are coming down the line that we've been implementing over the last couple of years. We implemented some new stuff, and...
Even the conversation tonight with Brewster about dark sky compliance and the new LED lighting, that right there is an issue that exists in the regulations and needs to be addressed. And I think that's a really good example of something this committee could work on. There are conflicts between dark sky compliance, full shield cutoff, and a lot of the LED lights that are out there right now. And that's something that I think this committee could look at. Lighting has changed even in the last, you know, year, obviously, so I think that there's a need for education on best practices for the board too, because I, I was in order of all these issues before, before they were. I, I hope you don't feel that the mission statement I put together restricts the committee in any way. I wanted it to be broad for you to give you the ability to do whatever you like, but also just create three bins to kind of work in, because I think there were those three things that we discussed at prior meetings, so hopefully, hopefully this works for you. My hope is that you would vote to establish the committee tonight with a specific membership and potentially adopt the mission statement, because Susan, you're absolutely right that I think the, the committee should meet to discuss what it specifically wants to do, but I think it does need some sort of bumpers along the bowling alley to sort of keep it moving in the right direction, um, in the context of what the planning board is looking for.
Would you like a motion?
Oh, well, yes, do we, how are we going to determine, well, we've got one member of the board, the selectmen, that's what the suggestion is.
I think they should make their own decision.
And then two public members.
I could move that the planning board establish a lighting subcommittee with five members, two appointed by the planning board, one appointed by the board of selectmen, recom, sorry, one recommended by the board of selectmen to be appointed by the planning board, and two members of the public to be appointed by the planning board. And then, once we get the committee established, second motion would be to appoint John and Susan as planning board reps to the subcommittee.
Okay, okay, so that's, that's a motion from you, establish the lighting subcommittee?
Right, with the membership as indicated.
Okay, and I'll second that, that motion. So can I do a roll call vote? Okay, Peter Goodwin? Okay, Von Dugan?
Yes.
Susan Replier?
Yes.
Mike Carter?
Yes.
John Thurston?
Yes.
Brad Harriman?
Yes.
And Kathy Barnard, I'll vote, yes. Okay, now appointing the, the two members, Susan and John, are you, are you willing to be the members?
Yes.
I'd be happy to move that the planning board appoint Susan Replier and John Thurston as the planning board members of the lighting subcommittee.
Okay, I'll, I'll second that motion and do another roll call vote. Peter Goodwin? He, he, did he not? Yes. Von Dugan?
Yes.
Susan Replier?
Yes.
Mike Carter?
Yes.
John Thurston?
Yes.
Brad Harriman?
Yes.
Kathy Barnard, I vote in favor. Okay, so, um, how, how are we going to deal with the two, um, citizens? I, I know Patty Cook has indicated an interest.
Okay, so what we need to do is we need to find another one. We had to have the official request on a...
What I was going to do is just do a posting on the website and posting in the newspaper and then, um, you know, obviously let Patty know that the notification has gone out so she can submit her name for consideration. Obviously, sort of, she's first on the list, I think, and then hopefully we get another member and then I'll write a letter to the board of selectmen about the committee being established and request that they appoint somebody. Peter, if you could just restart, you should be able to jump on the right way, so I see that you're calling me right now on my cell phone. If you can just restart the, the meeting for yourself, you should be able to get on, okay? That would be my proposed methodology to, to get the two public members and the board of selectmen actually appointed. Hopefully, we could do that in the next, uh, two weeks potentially or, and maybe make the appointments in two weeks at your next meeting.
So possibly you'd get requests written, requests for somebody to be on that committee?
I'd like at least a statement saying, I'd like to be on the committee and, you know, if you potentially get three or four, you may have to make some tough decisions, but that would be a good thing.
It takes a little longer, but in the long run, I think it's better to do it that way. Okay. All right, can we go back to the, um, master plan and the implementation? Matt, we had all of those copies and we all have our little copy. Who else has gotten this magnificent document?
We all got one.
Yes, so...
We all got one.
The board of selectmen are, also have copies. It is at the statutory required places, the library and town hall, obviously. We have not yet given the chairs of the committees and boards, or sorry, the, the chairs of the committees a copy just yet, Kathy, so this, they have not been delivered a final hard copy.
Okay, well, I guess, I guess that was my, my question. I mean, going, going through this, uh, each chapter's got a bunch of high priorities and, and I was, I mean, I, we really need to take the lead, I think, as the planning board to implement all of this, I think.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So, um, I, I guess the, we need to get a copy to EDC, Heritage, that's easy because Von, you're on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Energy and, uh, I, I know, are, are you on the Energy Committee? Yeah, okay, and Susan Fuller, Fuller's on that and Nancy had gotten in touch with me, um, about issues in, in the master plan, but really, um, what needs to happen, and I think it's an important issue, but, uh, as, as far as the implementation plan, it seems that we are, they're suggesting some changes in our site plan regulations that would encourage more energy measures. And I think that needs to come, it, it should probably come from the Energy Committee to the planning board.
The, the specific recommendations you're saying, as far as what sections to change in the site plan or the regulations?
Yeah, what they're, I, I mean, that's, and the same with the EDC, the same with the, the Heritage.
I, I think that ideally the process would work, that the last meeting we reviewed those amendments to stormwater management, or sorry, the shorefront residential district and Wolfboro Waters Committee, I think ideally, other committees would operate the same way. They would review the regulations and the ordinance, make some recommended changes to the board, the board would consider those changes and potentially move forward with some amendments. I think that's the best way for the process to work. It does demand though, that there is some interaction between the planning board and the committee directly, and that's a tough piece. When we worked on some of the goals for the Energy Chapter and other chapters as well that dealt with specific regulations, um, there was discussion about where the changes might be appropriate, but I think there needs to be some more specificity as far as recommendations from the board.
Yeah, and what I was, when I was thinking about this, I, I mean, I could certainly go to the Energy Committee, EDC, and Conservation and take them, but that's why I want, want to know, I mean, is everybody going to get a copy of this? But take them, the plan, and then go through the, some of the items so that these committees are then going to have an idea of how to go about, uh, making the implementation plan work. So that was kind of my thought.
Why don't we put the onus on the committee? Ask the EDC, ask the Energy Committee to go through the chapter that they're most concerned with.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do. I was going to go to them and say, here's the plan and, and these are things that, that are high priorities and this is how the process would work. Because, you know, they, I would imagine the committees don't really totally understand how the process is going to work.
Yeah, and I think if you drop the plan on their, their collective desks and say, here's what you should be working on for the next 10 years, it's not going to work too well. So I think if we can have a direct interface between the planning board, whether it be for Kathy or somebody else, it's more appropriate, potentially the person that represented that chapter.
Right.
I think it would be really, really helpful, because I think it's important to have a relationship between the, the board member and the committee itself, rather than again, dropping that 240-page document on their desks and asking them to take action. I don't know that that approach would be too difficult. And, and I say that only because I, I, I did bring the plan to the EDC for consideration and we went through a process of reviewing what recommendations were associated with the EDC. And there had to be an interaction with me and the EDC to give them the direction as far as where to look, and that was a very helpful process. And they picked out what their highest priority items were, but we had to have that, that meeting to actually go over what exactly was in the plan and how to best sort of disseminate all the information that's in there, because there is a lot. It's overwhelming. And I think that for something like the Conservation Commission, the EDC, the Heritage Commission, it's going to take a little bit of leading from the planning board and Ethan Staff to get them moving in the right direction. So I think it's really good to have a direct meeting with them.
Right, well, well, and actually the, the timing is okay, because once we have a new person on board, the person is certainly going to have a menu of things to do. Right? Uh, so, do you folk, is, is that something that you think would work? I mean, if we actually take, do we have copies?
Yes.
How many copies do we have?
We have, uh, I think 20 copies downstairs. Not, are, not all are bound in the same way. We have many in binders. We have plenty of copies to go around to all the committees.
Okay.
We do not have enough copies to go to every committee member. If that's something you want to do, we can certainly print, um, but it's up to you as a word.
I think we should give it at least to the chair of the committee.
That the, the committees could do that themselves.
Yeah, you could maybe dis, you know, copy and disseminate parts that are specific to their committee.
Okay. Any other thoughts on, on this, folks? And what about the board of selectmen? Matt, you said they have, have their copies?
Yes, we made copies for the board of selectmen. We did have a request from a member of the board of selectmen about a month ago for a, a list of only those recommendations that had the board of selectmen as a responsible party. I did not create that list just yet, but they wanted just that, that specific list of recommendations and while they were working on getting that together.
Yeah, well, I think we did that last time.
You did, yes. It's not, it's, it's definitely achievable, can be done.
Yeah.
So I just need to provide it to them, but they do have access to copies.
Okay. Okay, all, all right, well, let me, um, figure out how we can get this information to all of these committees. What, what about your community facilities, Mike and John?
Well, I, I jumped the gun and sent you a list...
Yeah, right.
Of, um, most important pieces out of our committee work for implementation and I assigned responsible parties to them as well. It's nothing that you would be concerned about, because you agree with me on everything.
I know. We already went through this anyway.
Basically.
Well, that wasn't jumping the gun, thank you for doing that.
Well, I know, you asked me, so I said...
Yes, I did, right. Yeah.
And I did it, and, and I did it, and by proxy from John, assign responsibility to the BOS for a number of the, um...
Yeah, we went, we went through it at the end and put our high and low priorities all together before we ended our committee.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
And the EDC has already been introduced to the met wonders of the master plan and they know what their responsibilities are likely to be.
They've actually already gone through and prioritized the recommendations that they felt were most important, including those that were assigned and were not necessarily assigned to them.
Well, that's, that's fine.
Does that exist anywhere?
Um, Kathy Eaton was working on a new draft of it after the, of the meeting before you arrived, Mike.
Okay.
So they actually have gone through that exercise already.
Okay.
Okay, well, um, let me come up with a, a plan of, of how we can get this information out to people so they can at least start working on it, okay? And we can talk about it the next meeting. Okay, um, let's see, next item. I might have an agenda, I've lost mine.
Would you like me to walk through the non-conforming structures amendment?
Which one?
The non-conforming structures amendment?
Yes, okay, great.
Within the, on the proposed definitions amendment sheet that I provided you for packet, I wanted to start, if I could, with the non-conforming structures amendment within 17543. You may recognize this section as we made amendments to this two years ago, um, adding some specific provisions under 17543, non-conforming use of non-conforming structures. In the process of implementing this over the last few years, we've had some questions come up about particularly the expansion and extension section and item number four within that. There was some confusing language in there that seemed to imply 25% threshold for expansion by a special exception. It's actually measured based on the lawfully conforming footprint. Let me give you a practical example of what that looked like. You had a large structure that was in a fully, in a fully conforming area of the lot, but only a piece of that structure was over a setback line or something to that effect. There was a reading of this section of the ordinance that a 25% expansion could be done in a non-conforming area based on the footprint of the structure that was in a fully conforming area. And if you want me to draw you an illustration for your next meeting, I'm happy to do that. But the reality is, is that it creates a discrepancy or it creates really a conflict within the ordinance with a later provision that is very clear that the 25% is only based on a non-conforming footprint area that's setback, that is the setback area. Is this clear to everyone? And if it's not, I can certainly come back with a, a sort of dialogue.
Say that, say that again slower.
Yeah, so if, uh, the way that this section reads, if you have a building, Peter, could you mute yourself, we can hear you clicking, sorry. If you have a building that is almost exclusively in an area of the lot that's fully legal, but it has a sliver of the building that's in the setback area, the way that this reads, it almost seems to imply that you could do 25% expansion within the setback area based on the square footage that's in the legal area of the lot. The intention was, when they drafted the ordinance, was to only allow 25% expansion based on 25% of the non-conforming areas, so only that sliver area that was in the setback. It's actually clarified later in the, in this section of the ordinance to be the right way, but this section almost implies something different. So it's, it's sort of a conflict between, between two sections or two subsections within 17543A that just needs to be resolved moving forward.
So if the building is partially non-conforming in the setback...
Yep.
The 25% is garnered on the entirety, no?
It's only based on the portion that's non-conforming, because the idea was if, if you've got a portion that's non-conforming and you're going to be allowed to expand that, we should only let you expand based on that limited portion that's non-conforming, not the entire building as it exists today.
Right.
Otherwise, your nonconformity gets huge.
Makes sense.
Yeah, we, we, I had somebody argue with this, this with me.
So you're not going to allow them to build in the non-conformity area?
We, we do allow that, but only up to 25%, and it can't go any closer than what's already there. So we, we have this, what you're allowed to do is if you had an area of a building that sticks out in the setback, you're allowed to add something to the side, provided that it doesn't go further into the setback area and provide that that addition to the side isn't greater than 25% of the floor area of the existing piece that's in the setback area. So no further encroachment, less than 25%. That's what we were going for and, and we're clear in another section, but in this section, it is a little bit confusing, so I'd like to resolve it to make sure everything's in alignment in this portion of the ordinance, because honestly, about 50% of the cases that go to zoning board actually deal with this portion of the ordinance, so it's really a critical one.
Can we move this to public hearing at this stage? Is this a second hearing or second reading of this?
This is the first consideration of it by the board. You have not seen this specific amendment before.
That's correct, all right. Do it one more time.
This is a new one. I just wanted to make sure I had the, the issue correct before I brought it to you.
Okay.
But it is, it is one that I'd like you to consider for 2021. I think it's an important one. Again, there, there is a more restrictive portion of the ordinance, so you're protected in that manner, but it's just a conflict that needs to be resolved.
Okay.
And I, you know, I do apologize for not recognizing when we first drafted the language. I thought it was clear, but of course, in hindsight, it's not.
So we're going to move this to our September 15 meeting, second reading.
Okay. Okay, so no one has any question? I mean, now, all you're doing is you run into some problems with it and you're clarifying it, right?
Yeah, it's being used quite, it's being used quite a bit, we get a lot of questions about it.
Right.
And we've had some consultants be, trying to get a little cute with it, quite honestly, because they've recognized this issue, so let's fix it.
Okay. All right, good. Okay, then the next one is the mean natural grade amendment?
And I wanted to talk to Vaughn in advance of the meeting, but I didn't get a chance to do that, so I want to explain why I'm recommending this particular amendment. It starts from a similar place, and I've had consultants raise this issue as part of both building permit applications and shore land applications. The issue that's been raised is the way the ordinance reads currently at the 10-foot intervals around the proposed building perimeter. It creates issues because it does not define specifically where the 10-foot intervals should be measured from. So the site can be manipulated to create different mean natural grades based on where that origin of measurement is done. The alternative approach, which I recognize has issues, and Vaughn sent me some great comments about this prior to our last meeting, the alternative approach is to create what I think is a more scientific method, but could create additional issues, of just saying if there is a two-foot contour that intersects with the structure, you're required to take the mean natural grade of those two-foot contours that are intersecting along the foundation of the structure. I do want to ask Vaughn to comment on this if possible, because she had some good concerns that she raised with me, but I just want you to recognize that this 10-foot interval is very well intended, but it does give sort of applicants the ability to define how they measure their mean natural grade based on that starting point, at least in my opinion it happens.
So, you want me to answer?
Yes.
So the idea is that you're taking the natural grade before construction. So if you're building up mounds or putting a house on a plinth of fill,
Yep.
you're not measuring around the plinth. You're going to the side lot lines and looking at what was the grade before a building was there. It's easy to do on boundary lines and then just extrapolate. And then, so now you've got a footprint and the natural grade, never mind what fill they're putting in or taking out.
Right, and I don't want to change the natural portion at all. The only thing that I'm recommending changing is, as you look at a foundation, if you do 10-foot intervals, you have to start somewhere on that foundation, and depending where you start, you can modify what the actual mean natural grade is as you measure those 10-foot increments.
I don't think so. You just take the building, you can start anywhere and everywhere, you know, we could say the northeast corner, whatever, and you just go every 10 feet, and you say, you know, here, 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 the grade was this.
But if it's variable topography around the, around the foundation, you can manipulate it such that the mean will be, and perhaps I'm wrong in this, but this is, someone gave me two plans and said, look, I can get different height out of the structure depending upon where I start my 10-foot interval measurement.
I think they're, they're not interpreting the natural grade properly, if that's the first.
So what are you trying to fix here?
I'm trying to fix that I think that this approach allows for manipulation of
So what are they manipulating?
They're able to get additional building height based on how they measure the mean natural grade.
So they're measuring the mean grade after the natural grade is disturbed, is that what you're saying?
No, they're, they're doing it correct on the natural piece, but the 10-foot piece, when you start measuring the 10-foot intervals around the structure, if I start on the high side versus starting on the low side versus starting in something in the middle of those two, and I go around a building, my belief is that it will create different results based on where you start that increment measurement.
No, because no matter where you start, you're taking 10-foot measurements, you're saying here it's 504, 508, 507, 506, you put all those together and then you average it.
But if you have, if you have, for example, a grade around it that dips down, if I start my measurement in the middle of that dip versus starting on the top of that dip and I begin my measurements around, it can potentially produce different results.
Well, then, instead of 10 feet, you should make it five.
And maybe that's, yeah, maybe that's the solution.
I think 10's pretty close.
Okay.
And they can't start from the low point, which basically gives them a
Well, that, that's just it, that's, that's what has been brought, where they try to start in a location that gives them additional height.
I'd like to come and see that.
Okay.
Yeah, because I, I'm not sure.
Okay. Yeah, and I accept I may be wrong here, so
Well, it would just be such a subtle amount. It really
Yes.
Unless, unless they found a well.
Yeah, and then they get
Right, that's right. It is a subtle amount, but maybe
Do you have examples of where this should come up and where someone's actually taken advantage of the system?
I'm not sure that I would know.
Then maybe we don't have a problem to get fixed.
Okay.
I think the interpretation, I think maybe
Yeah, and I, to be, to be quite honest with you, this was brought to me by somebody, somebody in application, that they were coming up with two potential building height, or really two different looks for the building based on how they measured it. And it was on a shorefront application on a steep lot that had some variable topography. I'm happy to ask them for what their different measurements were produced, because I think that would be helpful to see, and I apologize for not bringing that to you correctly tonight.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Yeah.
So should we table, we should table this one?
Yes, let's, let's table it. Vaughn, is the wording, didn't you propose this wording back quite a few years ago?
Say that letter.
For building heights, was this part of it?
Yes, this was part of the building height fix years ago, yeah. I don't remember what year, but this was specifically to address some problems we were having then with building height.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So would you say most of, most of those applications where it's being skewed is measured from the high side of the property and not the low side, or?
So, John, that's a really good question, and honestly, I don't know that we've recognized this issue internally. I think that we basically get, we get an application, we assume it to be done in accordance with the ordinance, and it's verified by the building department, and they likely don't challenge how it's being measured, because either way, it's technically allowed in the ordinance.
I mean, if it came down to it, I'd, push comes to shove, I'd measure it from the low side of the property, that would mean that that would be the highest, make it the highest point on the property, if you measured from the lowest part of the steep.
Yeah, and you could have used something like that, say, look, you're going to do 10-foot increments from a very specific point, but yeah, I think I should talk to Vaughn a little more and get us an example for
Well, and if you do that, then your 30-foot building height shrinks.
I understand that, but, but that's what he's saying, though.
That's, yeah, that's actually, that's exactly what it is. So if you measure high point versus low point, that's where you create something that's maybe not drastically different, but it can be different.
But that's a standard way you could do it, you could measure it from the low side of the house and say, there you go, that's it.
Well, we should then reconsider our building heights, because the building height would probably need to go up.
Well, not necessarily, because if that's what the regulation says, that's what they get.
The regulation now says this.
Yeah, and we haven't got any practical examples of this being
And literally, you're going, let's say this table is the building footprint, you're going around the whole thing. If I start here and go 10 feet versus I start here and go 10 feet, it's a pretty subtle difference. It's going to average the whole number, no matter where you start. Right. So, you know, the difference in grade between here and here is probably going to wash out.
I remember this exact conversation when they did Depot Square and Fenton Vaughn, he was arguing the same thing for the height of the Depot Square, and he was going for a part of the building that benefited him rather than the lowest part of the building.
So this is the whole thing.
But if you're averaging it, I don't understand, if you're averaging it, what does it matter where you start? You're averaging all of the numbers.
Right.
Because where you take those spot shots will vary based on where you start. I need to get you an actual example, because I think it may be a diminutive issue that goes away after
Yeah, I think Vaughn's right, I mean, if you average it out, the differences are going to be really subtle.
Yeah, and I think that what I might need to provide context, I think there are very specific types of sites where this might be an issue, and there aren't many of those sites potentially, so I need to get you something.
Depot Square was one of them.
Yeah, and I think it is where you really have a substantial difference between, you have sort of a walkout situation with a substantial grade change, and maybe it depends on those sites where you measure from, but I apologize for bringing this to you a little sort of half-baked, but I wanted to get this in front of you now before I'm not here, just because I think this, maybe it's not something you do in 2021, but it might be just something to watch out for. It has been raised to me a few times, and, you know, it's certainly not an emergency, but it's, I think it should be on the board at least at least.
Either that or it needs a method.
Or, or
A method, yes, like, here's what you do, here's how you do it, and maybe that's what's missing.
That would work.
So that it's not interpreted.
Yeah, and it's sort of the same way that you were able to assist me with the building height measurement itself, if we maybe had a better methodology description, that might go a long way. I've had people ask me, how do, how do you do it? And that would be a great opportunity for me to say, this is exactly how you do it, done, and maybe that's
Matt, another approach on this might be to think about, as Vaughn pointed out, say, picture this table as a building. If you started each segment of your measurement from a corner, go from one corner to another corner, not more than five foot increments, do your average heights, then you do the same with the next corner, now you're going to have at least a four, you know, four-side building, probably, you know, the way they're being designed now, that could have 10, 20, you know, sides on it.
Yep.
That would give you a starting and an ending point, so they wouldn't be able to pick a spot, grade that would be to their advantage, you know, it would be, depend how the building is set on the lot.
Yes.
So you don't get that, you'd be starting at a specific point, go to another specific point, and say if that's a 20-foot segment and we did five-foot increments, it'll come on exactly, if it was 18 feet, you know, they would do it in, you know
So let's look at, what they think that they can do, because I'm not sure that
Just another way to think about it, anyway.
I think a five, yeah, I think we should look at it and maybe, you know, lowering the increment is the right thing to do.
Well, the
But I think the point's made is, is there really an issue, and I think I need to get you more on whether that's really, whether this is really a problem, something, not something
But Brad makes, Brad makes a good point, you've got to start somewhere where it's always the same and it's consistent for everybody.
Yeah, that goes to Vaughn's point, about having a procedure
I think a policy would be good, sort of to recommend to people, this is how you do it. Yeah, I like that idea, rather than maybe going to ordinance change, and he would just clarify how you do it. That's great.
Right, because there probably are a lot of people doing it properly.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question, is that what is the maximum percentage change in height which would be involved in this particular conversation? In other words, you're talking about from the highest point of the, of the foundation to the lowest or whatever, what's the, the change in height which is actually going to occur?
Depends on the lot.
Yeah, I think it does. I'm hoping an actual grade
Well, I mean, you have to get a special exception to go over 25%. I think that we've already
Well, you can go above 25% by something higher than the lot, so you could have potentially a grade steeper than 25% in the corner of the house or something like that. Peter, that's a little tricky to answer, it is site dependent.
Okay.
You could have a retaining wall, I mean, you could have a retaining wall built in a location along the side of a house, and that would substantially change the way it's, yeah, it's a tricky answer.
And you can imagine with a, with a steep grade, you know, you have to allow for some averaging, otherwise your house becomes, comes an undergrounder, you know, the roof would be in the ground in some cases.
Okay, Matt, how about the habitable space?
That's all set.
That one, or?
I did make amendments to that based on the discussion at the last meeting, I didn't actually add it to the agenda because I'm hopeful that these changes align with what we had discussed. I added clarification about the toilet rooms, and I did not make any specific modifications based on our discussion, because we had sort of agreed to proceed with this language and potentially review it in a couple of months and make sure it's still representative of the concern.
Why is it, why is this first floor thing in here?
So this, the toilet rooms on the first floor was added last year in an effort to avoid having the creation of habitable dwelling units above garages. We moved the requirement, or we modified the requirement for toilets to be a first-floor-only allowance in detached accessory structures, and with a toilet and sink only.
Yeah, but that's a detached, but this is a habitable space. Is it only in the detached section?
So you can't have habitable space in a detached structure?
No, but I don't see detached in here anywhere.
Right, but it, it, it doesn't need to be, because habitable space is not permitted in a detached structure. So this is habitable space only, so by, it, it doesn't mean it's allowed because it's not in here. We could add language that clarifies that habitable space is not permitted in detached structures, if we wanted to clarify.
But it's already assumed, so.
It is.
Yeah, but maybe it's, maybe assuming is dangerous, I mean, that's a perfect point. We could clarify the ordinance to say that.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm just worried that what if that word suddenly comes up in some other ordinance, habitable?
Yeah.
And it's, let's say it's a garage attached to a house, well, certainly you can have a toilet room in that situation.
Yep, by that's, fully attached garage
Right.
It tends to be more than that. What are your thoughts on including, just clarifying the language, saying habitable space is not permitted in detached structures?
I'm a fan of brevity.
With joining?
Correct, that's how I feel. I think we argued over this quite a bit. I personally find the language convincing.
We just have to be certain that habitable space never comes up for just a regular house, not a detached structure.
Okay.
I mean, I do want to think about that.
Yeah, think about that.
I think it's a great answer.
So why don't we just move this to 915 for further discussion?
Okay. All right. Okay, the work program, you've updated this again?
I did, based on our discussion at the mid-October meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to take a look at this. I'll make another adjustment to the work program if needed, but I wanted to get it clear in front of you what 2021 recommended zoning changes are, and please, if you do have any comments on this, let me know, but I believe all the changes that I made are in alignment with what the board had recommended. Just two quick comments, the impact fee study is, hopefully we'll have a contract signed on that very soon here. We have a fee-based study done by Bruce Mayberry, who did the town study back in 2009, and I'll report back to you on September 15 for more information on that. If you want to get that contract signed and started
Good.
And some of these we've already somewhat done.
Yes.
The removal of references to voluntary design reviews, I think we
So that is actually not done in the zoning ordinance, though. So we, we kept those in in the event that the site plan regs were not adopted, so now we actually need to go back and take out the references to voluntary design guidelines in the zoning ordinance and change those references to architectural design standards, which is now what's been adopted by the board.
After it's been approved.
You've already adopted, so they're in place, and we just got to make sure, yeah, we just got to make sure it actually reads.
It's just housekeeping.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's unfortunate it has to go through the zoning amendment process, but it does.
Okay. All right, any, any other questions on the work program?
One question is not on the agenda, I'll save that till later if you want.
Okay, well, why don't you delve into that right now?
What are we doing about our budget?
The planning board budget.
Yep, we have not yet discussed that.
I submitted a draft of the budget to the town manager for review. I am happy to share that budget with the board after the meeting tonight, I apologize, I think I had that on prior agenda, and I necessarily did not address it, I apologize. Probably a great discussion, but Mike, if you could share that with the board after the meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay, did you decrease it or increase it?
I think it's up right now.
Okay. Oh, okay. All right, okay, well, let's, we've got two sets of minutes, July 21st. Anyone have any issues? If not, we make a motion to approve the July 21st, 2020 planning board minutes.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, and I'll do a roll call vote. Peter Goodwin?
Yes.
Thank you. Juan Dugan?
Yes.
Susan Ripleyer?
Yes.
Mike Carter?
Yes.
John Thurston?
Yes.
And Brad Harriman?
Yes.
Kathy Barnard, I vote yes, so the minutes of July 21st are approved. The next set of minutes, August 4th, 2020?
Page nine.
Page nine.
Last paragraph. Add as an additional sentence after "see it the same way," period, the following, "Brad Harriman noted that the selectmen's vote was not unanimous." I think that reflects what you said, Brad, correctly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Move to approve.
Okay, with the corrections.
Seconded.
I beg pardon with corrections.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the August 4th, 2020 minutes. Peter Goodwin?
Yes.
And Juan Dugan?
Yes.
Susan Ripleyer?
Yes.
Mike Carter?
Yes.
John Thurston?
Yes.
And Brad Harriman?
Yes.
And Kathy Barnard, I vote yes to approve the August 4th minutes. Good job, Mary Zane.
Yes.
Keep it up. Okay, anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, motion has been made to adjourn.
Seconded.
Adjourned. Seconded. Peter Goodwin, are you in favor of adjourning?
I am.
Okay, Juan Dugan?
Aye.
Susan Ripleyer?
Yes.